Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic which is the states, one nation under God, indivisible, eternal. All right, can we please start with a roll call?
Council President Alberston.
Here.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Here.
Councilmember Perez.
Here.
Councilmember Prince.
Here.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Here.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Here.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
All right, thank you. Tonight, we're going to start off with the administrative report.
All right, good evening, everyone. Veterans and non-veterans aged 50 and older are invited to celebrate an evening of music and dancing at the annual Veteran's Day Dance Thursday, November 6th, from 5:30 to 7:30 at the Don Person Renton Senior Activity Center. Light refreshments will also be provided. Space is limited. To register, please go to rentonlaw.gov/register and select Course 26557. Renton's beloved annual holiday events are right around the corner. Mark your calendars now to save the dates. More information will be forthcoming. In November, we have the Holiday Bazaar at the Renton Community Center; December 5th, Opening Night of Clam Lights at Jean Coulon; December 6th, Battle of the Badges at Renton Technical College; December 7th, Canine Candy Cane 5K Fun Run and Walk; December 14th is the Renton City Concerts Band Holiday Concern, Renton IKEA Performing Arts Center; and January 1st is the Polar Bear Double Dip, Lake Washington or Henry Moses Aquatic Center. Renton residents are encouraged to participate in the public comment process for the city of Tuckwillah's proposed alternate trucking route. The proposed reroute could impact roads and neighborhoods in Renton along Martin Luther King Way, Southwest Sunset Boulevard, and Rainier Avenue South. Please submit your comments online before Wednesday, November 12th by visiting tuckwillah.gov/allentown. Information about preventative street maintenance, traffic-impact projects, and road closures happening this week can be found at rentonlaw.gov/traffic. All projects are weather permitting. Unless otherwise noted, streets will always remain open.
All right, thank you. Next up is Audience Comment. We do have a few people signed up to speak. I want to remind everybody that all remarks must be made to the council as a whole. When I call your name, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes to speak. When the light turns yellow, your time's almost up, and please start wrapping up your comments. And starting off tonight is Tai Nguyen.
Hello, all council members, and hello, Mr. Mayor. I'm here again, so I'm here last week. And just three minutes is not enough, so now I keep coming until I express all myself. Okay, about parking again. Heather and her husband work... Her husband didn't work there, only her worked there. And they schedule their busy hours Monday to Friday, I think 11:00 a.m. or 9:00 a.m., something like that, to 5:00. But she always stay after hour, sometime 8:00, sometime 9:00, sometime 10:00. But lately, she stay... She came on Saturday and Sunday as well, just a tolling. Okay? And while I spoke to one of the people who get toll, who live in the reserve, got toll. And she, when she came, picked up the car, she saw the assistant manager, her name is Heather, in that lean tolling office. So I'm sure they know each other. Okay? To able to change... It used to be Skyway tolling in that building. Since Heather moved in, they changed to lean tolling. And we don't know why. Now, we actually know a little bit concept why they changed to lean tolling. Okay? That's done with the parking. But now, they targeting Heather. I don't know Heather or somebody who is targeting to my business now. They go to... I just read the review. My... The guy who is always looking to my back and just told me, somebody write a nasty review about your business. And I just read, wow, I sit there, it's all lie. I never smoking. I never ask someone who go outside smoking. I never ask why I have to add my customer phone number. When I make an appointment for them, I have their number. That's a lie. I never add nobody's phone number. When they came to my salon, the first thing they have to do is sign in. When they sign in, their name and their phone number and the time they come. So whatever target into my nail salon and give me a really nasty review, that did not fair for me. So I hope the police or somebody who get involved to read that person and who will write that review. That's all I need to say today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next... The next one is Minnie, and I'm sorry, Minnie, I cannot read the last name, so you'll have to share it with us when you get up here.
Ta'fas.
It's my first time to be here, and good evening, everyone. It's about community safety and concern in our area. My name is Minnie Ta'fas, founder of Abysinia Beauty School and Clinic, a nonprofit organization serving the Renton community by providing education, job training, and professional beauty and scalp health and services. Our... We've been here for the last 10 years. Over the past several months, our business has faced increasingly safety and accessibility challenge due to homeless individual gathering directly in front of our entrance, often engaging in drug use and blocking our doorway. The situation has caused clients to cancel or schedule appointments out of fear or discomfort, blocked students' and customer access to the building, directly affected our income and ability to operate safely, including 1% loss of over $1,500 in a single day, damaging the professional image and welcoming environment we work so hard to maintain. As a small business and active community partner, I take pride in keeping my space clean, safe, and welcoming. I also invest in supporting my students and local events contributing positively to the Renton business community. Requests to the city council, I respectfully ask the city of Renton to increase police or community patrol visibility around our block, especially during business hours. Improve public safety measures to ensure local businesses and clients can access our facility safely. Collaborate with small business owners like myself to find sustainable solutions that protect both the community and local commerce. Abysinia Beauty School and Clinic is deeply committed to Renton's growth and community success. I want to continue being a part of the solution, but I need the city's partnership to make sure our students, staff, and clients feel safe coming on our facility every day. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Minnie, before you leave, could you give us your name, first, last name, and the city of residence for the record?
Minnie Ta'fas. The location is 203 South Second Street, Suite F, Renton, Washington 98057.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm going to actually direct you to the chief of police, who's in the back corner, and he's going to love to talk to you for a minute, so, and get your information. Thank you. Okay, the next... I don't know. How do you... Ms. R E J I? Ms. Reggie, okay.
Thank you guys for supporting us so far. So I've got support from... Well, Mary came by, your husband, Mr. Al came by, and it make a person feel like we're wanted and that you're listening. And I'm praying that they... I still don't have no hot water, but I got a call from someone that I think is working on it, and hopefully by Wednesday, something will go down. But thank you for the support from everyone, because they've been coming by the job. And I apologize for crying, but it happened. But thank you so much for everything.
All right, thank you. All right, the next up is Gabriel Diaz.
Howdy, folks. My name is Gabriel Diaz, and I am here to speak today against cutting the EHM program. I really hope you all had some time to look over the facts and figures I shared last week. Because I gave you all a ton of info and a lot of homework, I'll keep it short today. Cutting the EHM program in Renton means cutting officer jobs in a rough job market, giving control of a program to a private company whose goal will be profit above all else, and making Renton less safe. I understand the profit concerns, but I have shared some ways we can go around this as well as some of your colleagues. I honestly don't really understand the rush here, if I'm honest. There has really not been adequate time to reach out to everyone who is going to be affected by this. We are under no rush, and with something this serious and something that could matter to the safety of Rentonites, we should really do our due diligence. I am urging you all to vote no on cutting the EHM program.
All right, thank you. And next up is Lumen Nguyen.
Hello, city council. Hello, mayors. I'm here for Lumen Hespa, speaking for people at the Reserve located at 495 Renton Centerway, Renton, Washington 98057. We have come in here again and again. I think you guys tired of us, but we will have to speak up again. Last week, my client again get scammed by people over there telling them it's okay to park there in the permitted area, and then they go call the tolling company to toll my client car two minutes afterward. So they're not only scamming people now that people know, so they targeting and ask people it's okay to park there and then go tolling the car. I think he also got it on the phone as he interviewed the client about it. And so I'm here asking if we, the city, can send the police over to patrol during our business area. It will help at least keep them at bay and not targeting our clients. Also, please follow the money trail, see who is benefit from these, because one car tolling $800 over the weekend is more than $1,000. And these elderly people, they don't have that much income. Please help us, help the resident. Our business got hurting pretty badly, and a lot of people hated us. They go write bad review. I have to call Google and ask them to remove because it's not related to our service. It's related to something else, but it hurt our business. So we again asking for the city to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last one is Victor Yan.
Okay. Councilmembers, hello, mayor. My name is Victor Yan, and I represent my mom, Chi Yan.
Chi Yan.
She's a resident of the... She's one of the first handful of residents when the reserve was built. She was the first ones that moved in.
Since I moved in.
Only three minutes. Let me just talk, okay? Let me talk. Everyone's here for a reason. Asking police to help patrol, that's not going to help. We already know what the cities are becoming, with the drugs, with the fentanyl, everything. We all understand that. But for what this reason right now, this main thing was about the reserve with how the management has changed from good management to respected elders, assisted living people, you know? I feel like us Americans have forgot phyllopiitis. Piety, if that's the right word. My brother said phyllopiitis. I already know in Chinese, but he said that's the English word for it. So what we notice is, I feel like my car... My dad has lived there all these years, always parked in the front. He parked in the spot that's in the corner, right below from where he lives, and right in front of the Linda Hair Salon is the gym part. That part was never had a sign that says "Future Resident Park" until my dad parked there that night. The next morning that that sign was put up, my car was stolen. My parents called me, said our car was stolen. Then they found out the car was stolen. I had to leave work, go bail out the car. $600 to get a tolling out for the only couple hours? That's ridiculous. I haven't seen that. I mean, unless they change that with the tolling. But then I asked around, I guess, there's a lot of predator tolling. That's what it's called, right? Predator tolling. And that's what they're doing. And my conclusion is, there's collusion going. That's literally plain and simple. There's collusion between that assistant manager and the tolling company. That's... Anybody can see that. You guys could sit here and just hear it, and you can see it. She's coming out during times, instead of doing her job, helping elderly people understand how to use a computer, but she's outside taking pictures, catching every single car that does not have a tag for reserve, you know? And my parents don't read too much of English, so they gave out letter warnings saying that you need to get a parking permit, but they didn't give it in Chinese, Vietnamese, Spanish, any other languages where some people can't speak English. There is a lot of minorities in the reserve. You know, my parents is one of them. They've been there forever. And so we're really just here today, my mom want to explain, my mom wants to talk about so many things, but there's no reason to even talk about pets and fees and all these upcharges every month. That has nothing to do with you guys. Right now, we need to try to see where we get justice for this tolling, you know, to figure out if there's collusion going on with this toll yard and assistant manager. Is there a possibility we could all get reimbursed, you know? Like my mom said, she only gets 500, 600 bucks for social security a month. That was her whole social security. She didn't even have money for food, for nothing. You know, that's all taken out, it's gone, just to pick up a car out of the toll yard for a couple hours. So that's what I mainly wanted to speak about and to ask you guys to have a heart and look at the assistant living of people. There's people that's in wheelchairs, you know? People are still smoking. Smoking's been around for years. Now, we got these new laws, 25 feet. There's big background in the courtyard, they can smoke. They can make a smoking little patio where those people don't have to hobble out in a wheelchair, hobble out in crutches, walk into the rain and open to smoke. You know, I don't know if that's something the city we have to ask to help with, you know, for people like that. And it's just seeing everyone coming together and seeing what's happening, seeing how the abuse has been going on. There's been a lot of abuse that's been going on in power and toward the elderly in the last couple of years since new management kept changing manager with this new Heather lady that I keeps hearing about that I have not seen myself, that she didn't even show up for the meeting down at the reserve that day, you know? So that's all we have really to say, and hopefully you guys have understanding of heart why everyone's here. If you are for the people of the city, where we all voted for you guys, you will help us, you know? Because this is just a small part, and I know there's lots of parts you guys got to help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you for taking the time and coming and speaking for your mother also. So, all right. So first of all, I want to thank everybody that came out and spoke tonight. Appreciate you guys coming out here. And we had one business that had concerns about safety and some of the loitering in front of their business, but a lot of conversation around the parking at the reserve. And I know that our staff is looking into it. We had a conversation last week, and I'll be updated tomorrow at our ELT and find out where we're at, what we can and can't do. I do know it's a private parking lot, and it's a private business, so it kind of limits our authority, not... But nonetheless, we'll still be taking a look and seeing what the city can do to intervene or hopefully help remedy, because anything predatory in nature is not accepted. And the council members have reached out to me and asked, what can we do to fix this problem? So thank you very much for coming out. All right, next up is the Consent Agenda. There are two items for council consideration. If you'd like one or more pulled for separate consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Council President.
Hearing non-move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Council President Alberston, second by Councilmember Perez, that they approve the consent agenda as published. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. All right, motion carries. We're on to unfinished business. Council President Alberston.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Van.
Thank you, mayor. The Utilities Committee has one committee report to present.
Now, Utilities Committee, Utilities Committee Committee Report, Contract Amendment with Cascadia Consulting Group. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute Contract Amendment Number Two to Contract 23451 with Cascadia Consulting Group in the amount of $198,689.23 to continue implementing a waste reduction and recycling program for commercial customers. This is signed by the committee chair and member.
Mayor?
Yes.
I move that the council concur with the Utilities Committee Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Van, second by Councilmember Rivera, that the council concur with the Utility Committee Report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Motion carries. Councilmember Perez.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Prince.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember McIrvin.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
And Councilmember Rivera.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are moving on to legislation. We have three ordinance for second and final reading.
The first ordinance is regarding establishing the property tax for 2026. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year 2026 for general city operational purposes in the amount of $26,770,023, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be placed on second and final reading for the next...
No.
No. Yeah, that the ordinance be adopted as read. This is second and final reading. Unless there's discussion, it requires a roll call.
Council President Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is Ordinance 6171, that's regarding the property tax increase. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, authorizing a 1% increase in the property tax to be levied for the year 2026, plus increases attributable to new construction and prior year refunds, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Prince.
I move the ordinance to be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Unless there's discussion, this vote requires a roll call.
Council President Alberston.
Aye.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McIrvin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
Councilmember Rivera.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
All right, motion carries.
The final ordinance is regarding the 2025-2026 biennial budget amendment. An ordinance of the city of Renton, Washington, amending the city of Renton fiscal years 2025-2026 biennial budget as adopted by ordinance number 6147 and amended by ordinance number 6156, 6158, and 6163 by increasing the budgeted revenues and expenditures by $64,410,665 and $76,520,979, respectively, authorizing position changes, amending the 2025 salary table, and adopting the 2026 salary table, authorizing separation pay for eliminated positions, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Perez.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilmember Perez, second by Councilmember O'Halloran, that the ordinance be adopted as read. Unless there's discussion, it requires a roll call.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Van.
I think all the discussions we've had was last week and the last few weeks, but I know that the votes had already been set since pretty much a second and final reading. But I'd like to speak to the line item of the removal of the electronic home monitoring. I am someone who is with data and willing to learn and unlearn, but certainly in the position that I am in. And as you know, the late Mr. Don Person, who was a mentor of mine in some ways and someone who had started the program with Darryl, it means something to me as someone who learned from our elders, in that I really believe through the discussion and the hearing that we've had the last few weeks, that with such a policy change, it causes us to reflect and pause, where there's no rush in this. Why, understand, as a council, we want to be fiscal responsible, but we do have in front of us a criminal justice tax that we just motion, we had passed, right? And so which means, what does it mean for criminal justice, right? This is part of it. And for us to have a program that we've seen that it's perhaps causing some money deficit, $23,000 a year within the last four years, roughly, you can count up to a million or two, I think there's a possibility to be creative here. And I don't want us to miss that opportunity. And so with all that, I think that's all that I have to say, and I think we need to really be thoughtful in the process, and it might take staff a week or two to redo the adjusting the biennial budget, but if we're not listening to our community and getting the data from it, I think that's something that is a concern.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate it. I also would like to bring up a couple things. I know we did the vote last week, but I thank some of you now. I'm a glutton for punishment, and I love to have a good conversation. And so I want to talk more about this EHM program and how the dissolution and devolving and dissolving of it actually goes against our business plan in several ways. When it talks about provide a safe and healthy and vibrant community, if we dissolve and defund this program, it will not promote a self-safety or health or security through effective communication or service delivery. We will see a drop in services around UAs, around DUIs, and around different misdemeanor and court services that are so accessible when someone can go from the judge to the EHM office, which is conveniently in-house. When it comes to facilitating successful neighborhoods through community involvement, we have not been able to effectively involve the community or do that in the decision-making process here. When it comes to encouraging and partnering in a number of dynamics in terms of growing the human services that are addressing the needs, promoting a Renton as a progressive opportunity, and the rich Puget Sound, actively seeking grants and other funding, that is something we have not done for our EHM program, unfortunately. We have not pulled all the levers for the revenue funding of that. When it comes to retaining a skilled workforce by making Renton a municipal employer of choice, I would like you to draw your attention to Kenny in Georgia. They are in the third role. They are five years, six years away from their retirement. They are 30 years our employees. By saying yes to this budget, we are firing them, six years before their retirement, then hiring two new CED positions. That is not equitable. That is not in line with our business plan. I do agree that we need to be competitive and give our administrators raises. We'll be giving our chief of police his second raise while firing two EHM officers. I can't do that. That's not good policy. That's not fiduciarily responsible. It is putting bottom lines over people. That's not fiduciarily responsible. It is putting bottom lines over people. And I really would also, again, go back to the Keep Washington Working Act. I'm going to repeat what I said last week. We have seen a violation of our flock cameras. We have seen a fascist regime of administration as targeting our immigrant communities. Our in-house E H M program must abide by the Keep Washington Working Act. Private E H M companies do not. So those legal immigrants that come in contact with E H M and will now have to go to privatized services, their data, their safety is at risk with this new fascist regime. That is what we will be doing. And I want you all to be aware of that choice. And so this might just be a bottom line, but I would really implore you to reconsider. And so with that, I would like to, again, propose the amendment that we hold off on defunding and dissolving our E H M program and the firing of these two positions for the rest of the year until our twenty-twenty-six budget review this coming year and let it play out as we decided with our last mid-biennium budget. Please, for more community input. Will I have a second on this?
You have made a motion.
I did. I made the motion for the amendment to not dissolve or defund our E H M program and to hold off until the next budget cycle.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pull the electronic home monitoring out of this budget cycle. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails. We're on to the ordinance. Second and final reading.
Mayor? If my ask, what was the vote on the particular amendment? Was it three, four?
Four, three.
Four, three. Thank you, mayor.
You ready? Council President Alberton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before I vote, I do want to just give kudos to the city for actually proactively doing the research to bring our non-represented employees the compensation in line with what the market and what we're seeing around the region. That is a major part of this budget adjustment, and I believe it keeps Renton very competitive and keeping our high-level staff exactly where they need to be doing a great job. So with that, I vote yea.
Councilmember Vaughn.
I guess I don't have to repeat myself, but I want to reiterate that for a city that strives to be equitable and inclusive, this vote, as this ordinance is a pass, will, is not going to be inclusive and equitable. So nay.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Prince.
Aye.
Councilmember McGurvin.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Aye.
And Councilmember Rivera.
I'm going to personally apologize to Georgia and Kenny. I'm very sorry for what we're doing tonight, and I'm going to vote nay. And though we have not been able to save your jobs, I hope that the union, the gilder, or the gilder is able to fight for you. And I do apologize again that we failed you tonight.
All right, Mr. Mayor, we have five ayes, two nays.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. We are on to new business. Council President Alberton.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, November tenth at six P M, the committee of the whole will meet and the council conferencing center, one item on the agenda, and that is the city logo and guidelines. And then at seven P M, we'll have the regular council meeting here in council chambers and via video conference. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Van.
Thank you, mayor. I don't have anything new for new business, but I want to thank the community for coming and speaking. And I appreciate those who attended last week as well as this week. But I also want to remind us that while you're here interpreting or speaking for your mother, I've been in that role before as an interpreter throughout my life. We do have the resource for in-language translation, if the city clerk is aware ahead of time. And we need to make use of those resources because otherwise it would not be available in the future. So please do use in-language services.
All right, Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Monday, November tenth, at four fifteen, the Finance Committee will be meeting at the council conference room and as well as via video conference. There are three items on the agenda, which is a very surprise just to have three items. Some finance committee, wow! One is renewal of stop-loss coverage for twenty-twenty-six, second vouchers, third emerging issues in finance.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Prince.
It is a special day when planning, development, and finance have the same items on their agenda. At five o'clock on Monday, November tenth, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and by video conference. We have three items on the agenda. The Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Pros Plan briefing, critical area ordinance, and emerging issues in C E D. And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember McGurvin.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, on Monday, November tenth, at three thirty in the afternoon, the Community Services Committee will be meeting in the council conference room and via video conference. We have two items on the agenda. The first is the Human Services Update, and the second is Emerging Issues in Parks and Recreation. And that's what I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Rivera.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, again, that glutton for punishment loves to have a good conversation. I think many of us saw today that the City of Seattle has been looking in terms of what allocation and funding that they can provide for different food sources in their city. And I would like to motion that our city would like to explore funding options or supports for sustainable Renton Salvation Army and other food resources in our community with the hold and shortening of SNAP benefits that we are experiencing.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask for some clarification?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera, who are you referring that to?
I was going to refer it to the executive's office. I feel like that would be the best, unless you have something better.
No, 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 I just didn't know where you were referring it.
I appreciate you. I'm so sorry.
Mr. Mayor?
And then for.
Hold on, one at a time. Councilmember O'Halloran, then Councilmember Van.
As part of the Community Services Committee meeting next Monday, that is one of the topics that we will be discussing.
Yay, well, thank you.
Councilmember Van.
I was just going to ask at what point would it be brought back to the agenda, but that will be taken care of Community Services, so thank you.
Well, I will pull my amendment, and I look forward to Community Services next week. Thank you so much, Councilmember O'Halloran. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And with that, I will add one more thing to the gentleman who is speaking for his mother. I want to say that there is something our city can do. We can look at increasing rental protections. That was something that our city passed unanimously September of twenty-twenty-three. It's been within the executive's purview since that time. And we can increase in terms of redundant fees and predatory practices of different renters, and that's something within our purview. And I'm sure the mayor's office and myself would be happy to speak to you about that. Thank you. I have no new business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so.
Move adjourned.
Motion's been pulled, and then the move that we adjourned, second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, nay? All right, we're adjourned.